Good evening and welcome to the December 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home watching on TV. Before we have our pledge of allegiance tonight, I would like to ask you to please remember a bus driver from Murfreesboro City Schools, lady by the name of Brenda Lee, who passed away last week, and now our pledge led by Addison Moore, a fifth grade student at Salem Elementary, and also Carwin Wilson, a sixth grade student from Reed Rogers. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, members of the board, you have had an opportunity, I hope, to look at the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ritson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any questions or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there is none. Thank you.
Aye.
All right, communications?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I have short communications tonight, but a few more that's not actually on your agenda. First of all, Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank Ginger and Danny Demumbrium of Seeking Creek Farm for their generous donation of $500 to that school. Mitchell Nielsen is actually out tonight, their teachers and staff. They are doing hot chocolate, candy canes, and reading to our students at six locations in their school zone, so I'm hoping they're having a great turnout. What a great idea to do for the holidays. Would like to just thank everyone who helped us in the Christmas parade this past weekend. Bob the Book Bus was a huge success. We gave out thousands and thousands of books, and the kiddos loved it. We had nothing but great feedback on our social media, as well as a few emails, so we appreciate the help that we received on that. We are having steam walks across our district over the past last week and this week, so I know you guys are getting invitations if you want to see what our kiddos are doing. It's just fabulous. It's really impressive to be able to see what they're doing from kindergarten to sixth grade. Just a few more things I want to put on your agendas, and I will send this out to you as well. Discovery School application deadline is January 7th, so I did want to make sure I said that out loud to everyone tonight. January 7th is Discovery School application deadline. We've had four information meetings already. We've done them by Zoom, we've done them in the school, and we've done them offsite. So we want to make sure that anyone who's interested in Discovery knows how to apply for that. And then you're going to see on social media this week and next week that we are announcing Teachers of the Year at the schools. We will do that here sometime in January, and we will celebrate all of our Teachers of the Year in March. And then finally, Excellence in Education, which is part of the City Schools Foundation, has scheduled their event for April 9th at Copper Ridge. Those are your communications, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Board members, I fail to remind you, please remove your mask when you're speaking so that the TV audience... All right, Dr. Duke, public comment?
Yes, sir. Good evening, board. Tonight, we have one individual who has requested to address the board by completing the necessary paperwork. Individuals addressing the board will have three minutes to speak, and their time will begin once they state their name. All of these individuals have confirmed their address with the board as well. Our individual giving public comment tonight is Mr. Michael Dewey.
Mike Dewey with Rutherford Students First. Tonight, I'd like to discuss a concern to the citizens of Murfreesboro. In order to do that properly, I feel it's important to provide a quick timeline of events. August 24th, the MCS Board voted to reinstitute a mask mandate to the already present COVID mandates. September 28th, the Board voted to extend the COVID mandates until November. October 29th, MCS's Facebook shows Trey Duke and three guests breaking the very COVID mask mandate they recommended. Since August and again in November, none were social distancing or wearing masks. Excuses for this violation include the video was just three minutes, and the person recording had trouble hearing them. November 9th, the Board voted again to continue the COVID protocol until Friday, December 16th. And just two days later, on November 11th, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Ballard, and Ms. Moore all attended a meet and greet type meeting in the morning at Rutherford County School Systems Administrative Building. Photos are also available on RCS's Facebook. The three members were not wearing masks or also social distancing, and Ms. Moore is even holding a mask in her hand. These actions, like Mr. Duke's, are clearly hypocritical. Mr. Duke and Mr. Campbell were the only ones that were willing to discuss this accusation, and I commend them on that effort. Mr. Ballard was unwilling to discuss the issue, and Ms. Moore did not even respond to my inquiry. Mr. Campbell denied the hypocrisy claim. His excuses included that RCS did not have a mask mandate and that everyone was vaccinated. Although RCS does not have a mask mandate at the time, what does it say about a board member voting on a policy that he expects you, your children, teachers, and guests to follow when you enter the MCS facility but are not willing to follow those themselves in another school building? I also find it hard to believe that anyone checked vaccination status. However, even if that were true, the CDC, which has been in the guiding light of this board's rationale to enforce these COVID mandates, clearly indicates that even if vaccinated, everyone should be masked while indoors. Let me be clear, I am in no way suggesting that I'm for COVID mandates or mask mandates. I actually commend them for using common sense. My issue is with the utter and clear hypocrisy. Mr. Campbell stated to me on two occasions that he didn't understand why I was fighting this and that I was not going to change anything. Citizens of Murfreesboro, I present to you the facts and ask you a question, ask you to question the values and ethics of these individuals who are pushing mandates for you, your children, and the teachers to follow, but are obviously unwilling to follow them themselves, and also feel that it's not important enough to make changes to overreaching mandates. I ask if anyone on the board does want to respond to these accusations, that you allow me to come back up to the podium and address the board member and not make it a one-way communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Duke?
Yes, I'm actually going to head to the podium for this special announcement.
All righty.
Okay. Well, good evening. I am very pleased to announce that this month, we are going to be starting a new recognition program in Murfreesboro City Schools, which we're calling the Best of MCS, and that's a phrase we use a lot around the office as we talk about the stakeholders we have. The goal of this program is to publicly, at our board meetings, recognize students, employees, and stakeholders who have uniquely demonstrated that they epitomize what makes our school system so great. And the Best of MCS Recognition Program is our chance to say thank you and to say job well done to the people who make us really shine every day. So tonight, I am very pleased to introduce to you Rana Alfaji. She is this month's Best of MCS Recognition winner. She is a fifth grader in Ms. Fletcher's class at Case and Lane Academy, and she has been at Case and Lane Academy for the past four years. Last month, I am very pleased to say that Rana won the 4A Public Speaking Contest for all of Rutherford County with the speech she wrote on recycling. Because of her win, she's going to move forward to the area competition and represent every fourth through seventh grade student in Rutherford County Schools and Murfreesboro City Schools. She shared with us that she was inspired by a recycling project that she actually did her very first year at Case and Lane, as well as everything she has read this quarter in her English Language Arts Class about rainforest pollution and the human impact on Earth, which is something that they're studying in fourth grade this year. Rana, we are very proud of you, and I'm proud to give you this certificate, and we wish you the best of luck in the next phase of the competition. So thank you for representing the Best of MCS, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for bringing her here with us tonight. So board, I'd hope you congratulate her. Thank you. For tonight's Spotlight on Education, I'm going to ask Mr. Greg Lyles to come up and discuss many of the great community partnerships that we are, who are working with our students and our families this month. Mr. Lyles and Sharice, they coordinate our season of sharing, and so they're going to give you a brief overview of all the things that have been happening with our community sponsors this month.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
We want to share with you what the season of sharing is all about in Murfreesboro City Schools. It's been going on for a number of years, but for the last 10 years, we've tried to centralize this process so that it would take some load off the school counselors and social workers and the schools as well, because in the past, the schools have had to provide space for storage for all the gifts that were given to families that were being helped. And so with the help of Hobgood School and their old gym, we're able to centralize the pickup and delivery of those gifts. Without our community partners, it would not be possible to have the season of sharing, and I want to publicly recognize them. First of all, the businesses include General Mills, the Yoplait Plant, Parks Realty, First Community Mortgage, Mars Pet Food, Pathways Counseling Service, Southeast Restoration Service, Radio Station 93.1. Our local churches include North Boulevard Church of Christ Band of Brothers, North Boulevard Church of Christ Youth Group, Bethel United Methodist Church, Kingwood Church of Christ, Salem United Methodist Church, Calvary Baptist Church, Arrington Church of Christ, Grace Community Church, First Methodist Church, and First Baptist Church, Castle Street. Included are also community organizations such as the Murfreesboro Police Department Shop With a Cop, Salvation Army, the Official Liverpool Soccer Club of Murfreesboro, Young Women's Small Group, and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We have individuals that also contribute to this initiative, and other school-based organizations such as the Salem PTO, the Murfreesboro City Schools Instruction Department, Hudson Family, Hope Family, McDonald Family, Urban Family, Baloo Family. Those are all employees of Murfreesboro City Schools, Reed Rogers faculty members, and the Murfreesboro City Schools Finance Department are also sponsoring families for a season of sharing. So how are the children selected? We work on this initiative with the assistance of our school counselors and social workers. School administrators also have input, our outreach team. We look at a number of factors in determining how many kids were able to help at each school. For example, I'll use General Mills. If they call and says, okay, this year, we want to sponsor 75 kids, we look at the number of homeless kids at particular schools. We look at the number of backpack bags that the schools receive for the weekend, and a number of other factors as well to determine how many slots from General Mills that each particular school will receive. And so the list goes on and on. We do the same for Murfreesboro Police Department and all the other organizations that contact us and say, I want to help this number of families or children. But again, I want to emphasize that we could not, could not do that without the help of the social workers, school counselors, and our outreach team. This year, 2021, Season of Sharing, we were able to assist 1,045 students plus. Last year comparatively, I think we assisted about 750 kids. But again, this is all possible because of the generosity of those organizations and individuals. There's a few snapshots. It's the North Boulevard Youth Group Christmas Party where students across the districts were invited. It's really a great event. Students are able to shop. They have a little program. They get to know Lisa Trail, but it's really a great family event. Parks Realty, for the last several years, has been doing the same thing, sponsoring children across the district. The North Boulevard Band of Brothers, just a few shots from the shopping last week at Walmart. We, prior to COVID, we would actually take the children shopping, but since COVID, we have adults that assist us with shopping for the individual children. And we had the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity from MTSU come and assist us as well. That's just kind of a snapshot of what it looks like, all the gifts delivered from General Mills. Our maintenance department actually goes out, load those up, buses, box trucks, whatever we have available, to bring all those items back to Hobgood's gym.
All right.
Sharice?
All right. So this year, we started something new. We have so many great community partners that give to us. We wanted to give back, so we introduced the Season of Giving to our Title I schools, and we had three schools that participated this year: Black Fox, Case and Lane, and Hobgood. So how this worked, the schools had food drives, and they decided what items they wanted the students or families to bring in. It would just be one item. They would combine these together to make boxes. So either it became a snack box for the children to be able, the students to take home during Christmas break to have snacks, or some schools decided to create family meal boxes. So the pictures here are from Case and Lane. They're actually doing this tonight. They did a family meal. So within the boxes includes our outreach newsletter that goes out every month, and also family games that they can play together. Then we had community donors donate meat to make this a full, complete meal. So those donors were families and individuals. Sam's Club donated meat, Murfreesboro Chapter of NAACP, Murfreesboro Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, and The Mission Sustains Us. And so just to end this up, we just want to, we would like to thank our community partners and district employees for their generosity toward our students and families during this year of Season of Sharing. And then a special thank you to these groups of individuals, the school counselors, the social workers, the outreach team, Hobgood Administration, Maintenance Department, MTSU Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, and Student Support Services Department. Without all of these people, we wouldn't have been able to do all of this.
I'll have to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Anybody? Mr. Ballard?
Just a comment. This is wonderful, and it's just great news, especially at this time of the year. Let me get my mask off here. But the thing I would like to encourage everyone going forward, and I know you do this a lot, Greg, but we need to recognize that these businesses that are our community partners count on, I mean, count on us to support their business. That's why they do it, and they do it for the goodwill of the community. But, so I just encourage everyone here and everyone at home, when you see the name of a particular business, maybe move them up the list on where you want to do your shopping and take care of those businesses.
Thank you. Well said.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Thank you. Very good report. We're very proud of you and what you have gotten accomplished and continue to get accomplished. All right, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
I'll second. Ooh.
Mr. Ritson, we'll let you second that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any question on the consent items? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. First reading of proposed school calendar.
Yes, sir. So tonight, we are presenting a proposed school calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. Before the board votes, however, I would like to briefly, and our team would like to briefly, provide the board just some insight into the creation of the calendar process that we undertook this year. As you are aware, I'm currently meeting with the Teacher Advisory Council, which is made up of our current Teachers of the Year from each building. And in November, we really focused our meeting on the academic calendar. I would like to invite Ms. Arnett and Ms. Vance from Discovery School to the podium to discuss briefly the calendar creation process that we undertook this year.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm glad everyone got the red memo, it looks like. As Dr. Duke said, in our November meeting of our CHAT Committee, as we like to refer to it, we did present the current calendar that we're currently in, what they liked and what they disliked, and I thought, and Dr. Duke thought it'd be a great opportunity for you to hear from one of them tonight, Mrs. Vance, which is currently our district teacher, one of our District Teachers of the Year. So I'm going to let her take a moment and share with you the process, and then I'll give you the key takeaways that we found from that.
Hi, my name's Tiara Vance. Like Dr. Duke and Ms. Arnett said, Dr. Duke invited a team of us teachers to take part in the Teacher Advisory Council this year. We meet each month to learn more about the school system and really just make sure that teachers have a voice. In November, we collaborated on the district-wide calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. We began by analyzing the current school calendar and discussing what we thought worked really well and what kind of things could be improved upon. Then we annotated a poster-sized version of next year's calendar, sort of a skeleton version of it, implementing the ideas that we had to see if they would work within the framework for the next school year. We were able to get a lot of feedback from the teachers in our school buildings and hear perspectives other than our own, and really form a solid plan to submit our final feedback to Ms. Arnett and to Dr. Duke regarding the calendar. So our ideas really represent what we think is best for our schools, what we think is best for the teachers, and then, of course, what is most important for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. One of the things that we're very proud of, of this calendar, is we did receive a lot of teacher input, not only from the committee that met Teachers of the Year, but they took that information back to their schools and were able to receive input from the teams there. We did also share it with principals to get their input as well. So several of the key takeaways were they love the August start. That was one thing. They wanted to start in August and not July. From that, they asked that we consider moving planning days to a Friday or a Monday. And then the big celebration was they really wanted that week of Thanksgiving, which is a little different from the normal past calendars. And then again, they wanted to be out by Memorial Day. Now, one of the things that they wanted, that we worked really hard but just couldn't make it happen, was they did want parent conferences to be moved up a little earlier. We weren't able to do that just simply because the way some things fail, but we will continue to look at that as we go forward.
And I think, thank you, Ms. Arnett, and thank you, Ms. Vance. And to kind of wrap up, as they said, we did present this to the school principals as well, and one of the big takeaways for that Teacher Advisory Council was really helping to understand this is the way it works, right? This is the number of days we have to have, and really kind of setting some priorities. If this is a priority, then what are we maybe willing to give up as a district as well? And we're really proud of the calendar we've created as far as feeling like it really does represent the voice of our teachers and some things they asked for, and that we feel like, as Ms. Vance so eloquently said, ultimately is going to meet the needs of our students as well. So we are presenting this calendar for approval, and we are happy to answer any questions you have regarding this.
I just have a comment.
Ms. Barton?
I just want to say thank you, and Sheri will remember. We used to do a very similar process where the teachers had a whole lot of input, and then we stopped doing that for a while. So it just, when teachers help do it and then go back to their schools and explain how the process works and what the restrictions are, because everybody really doesn't understand that, I just think it makes it so much better for everybody. They feel like they've had a voice, and I just really appreciate you doing that.
Mr. Stevens, and Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I promised I wasn't going to say a whole lot tonight, but I did have to say, and I'm piggybacking a little bit with Roseanne, I think this is a great concept, especially to have the teachers involved, the Teacher Advisory Council. I don't know if it's brand new, revised, or what, but I think it is excellent, excellent, excellent. I think this is a wonderful idea. That input is invaluable. And I'm also glad to see that there will be a week out for Thanksgiving, and we still have fall break. I think that's good. My grandkids will love you for this.
Ms. Moore?
I also want to say I think this is great. I'm glad there was lots of teacher input, and hopefully that is what led to no half-days in the middle of the week, and I don't even think any full days in the middle of the week, which I know is great for teachers but also for families, just for planning purposes. So thank you.
I will say, we do have one full day in the middle of the week, and that's because of Election Day, and that is our only one that we weren't able, and it really goes back to what Ms. Arnett said, where we couldn't adjust the parent conference is because of the election cycle for this year.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Ballard?
How about parents? Were they involved in this at any point?
So we started this year getting the input from our Teacher Advisory Council specifically, and then we looked at it with our principals as well. We did compare it, of course. One of the things we're really looking at is other districts. So specifically, we wanted to make sure that the Rutherford County Schools' start, end date, spring break, fall break matched those major holidays for those that have students in both of our systems. So we looked really closely at that, and then also looking at surrounding districts. And again, we know that the full week at Thanksgiving is new for us. It is not necessarily new to this area. There are eight school districts that immediately surround us that have both Thanksgiving and fall break off. So we really looked at what other school systems were doing, how we could make that work, and the major source of our input this year did come from the teachers and the principals, and then making sure we aligned to the greatest extent possible to the county.
So I guess you didn't get input from the parents, then?
We did not directly solicit input prior to this first draft.
Okay. Going forward, I think it would be a good idea, even now in hindsight, maybe to put a parent focus group together or something to have some input on that.
Absolutely.
You know, when they look at this, I think all parents are thinking, okay, well, now what am I going to have to do with my work schedule, you know, and how am I going to work with this? So anyway, just keep it in mind. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, do we have a motion on the floor then, please, to approve the calendar as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there is none. Thank you. I'll have to say, I've been in several schools this past week, and everybody was very positive about this calendar, but I think it's good. Policy 6.306?
Yes, sir. On March 31st of 2021, Governor Lee signed the Teacher Discipline Act into law. This act, which goes into effect January 1st of 2022, grants educators the ability to submit a written request to their principal, requesting that a student who repeatedly or substantially disrupts the educational environment be removed from the classroom for a specified period of time. As a result of this new law, we are recommending this new policy, 6.306, to address the removal. Many of the requirements of the law are currently already in place in our district as part of our multi-tiered evidence-based behavioral support plan, and our schools, our district staff has already begun working with our school administrators to make sure they are prepared to appropriately implement this new policy and law. We are recommending approval of the policy, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this. you may have regarding this.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Is it authorizing just the ability to make a written request?
Yes, it authorizes teachers to make a written request for a student to be removed from the classroom, but before making the written request, the law outlines six steps that have to have been done, as Dr. Duke stated, that are already part of our multi-tiered behavioral support systems, before the request can be given to the principal.
So outside of a written request of some sort, on a local government level, on a school board level, we've already addressed these similar issues. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore?
Can you say a little bit about how this new law intersects with existing laws that protect students with special needs? And I'm thinking specifically about restrictions on isolation and that sort of thing. How does this align?
Yeah, so absolutely. In this law, there is a provision that states, of course, IDEA, Section 504, the ADA, and any other federal laws, we have to be in compliance with those. So as it pertains to a student with an IEP, for instance, if the removal would result in the denial of a free, appropriate public education, or the student being moved to an environment that's not the least restrictive environment, or not getting the accommodations that the student would need in accordance with the IEP, then we would not be able to make that move. So in all instances, we have to comply with the federal law, whether it be Section 504 or IDEA or the ADA.
Thank you.
Mr. Sadler?
Thank you. As I'm reading through here, and I may have overlooked it, there's a couple of things that stick out to me. Line number 12, "The student will be given notice of the rationale for the request, as well as opportunity to offer explanation," seems a little rich for our age demographic. And the other question I had deals with parent input. I don't know that that's a part of this, and I don't know whether the state law requires that it be. So I guess my question has to do with that notification process, and it may be addressed in another policy that we already have. I do remember the six steps, et cetera, that we talked about, so if you could speak to that just a little bit.
Sure. So to answer your first point, where it says that the student would be advised of the rationale for the request, of course, that was something that we, as a pre-K6 district, you know, immediately that popped into our head, is how are we going to handle this, right? Because, again, we are a different district, and laws and the TSBA policies are written for the whole state, which generally is K-12. So in this instance, of course, and we've talked about the law with the principals, and it came up then as well, we would just give the student an opportunity to explain the behavior. So if the teacher says, you know, little Johnny is hitting or flipping over a desk, the conversation would be age-appropriate and say, you know, we've been told that you were hitting and flipping over a desk, not that Ms. Jones wants you out of her classroom. You know, we would not tell the student that the request has been made. It's just an opportunity for the student to provide an account of his or her behavior. So I hope that answers that part of your question.
It does.
And then, as far as the parent input, that is built into the process, as I discussed previously, the teacher has to go through six steps, and just for the purpose of the conversation, I'll go through each one of the steps. The first step is to address the behavior with the student, so using those behavioral supports and the training that we already do give our teachers to address classroom behaviors. The second thing is to provide consequences to the students for the behavior. The third is to have a conference with the parent, and it has to be either in person or over the phone. So not email, not text messages, not dojo, a live voice-to-voice conversation that has to be documented. The fourth is an opportunity for the student to receive counseling. You know, we have great counselors in our school. We have great community partners that come in and counsel our students in the schools, so provide those opportunities for the student, which, of course, we already do. The teacher also has to develop and implement a plan to improve the behavior, which, once again, we already do. And then, the teacher has to have issued a disciplinary referral to the building administrator before they can do this request. So again, this is kind of just like formalizing in the law things that we already do in our district when we have behavior issues in the classroom. So the parent is involved in that point. Also, if the student were to be removed from the classroom, one of the options that the principal has is to require the parent to come in for a conference before the student returns.
I accept that. Kind of a follow-up to that, and I don't know if it's going to be possible, if it'll make it in or not. I would like to see, I would like to see the counselor involved. I see there in one of those steps, but I'd like to see him at that last step as well, if that's a possibility.
The disciplinary referral process?
Well, when it gets to the point where the principal is having a conversation that, hey, Johnny, you're out, that is there a possibility that the counselor can also, I don't know, sit in on that meeting, kind of be there as a support type of thing? That's what I'm looking at for the child, because then again, there's a reminder that, remember, we went through these steps, et cetera, et cetera. I'm looking out for that. I got put out of a lot of classrooms. I don't know if y'all can tell. When I did, we didn't have all this formal process. It was just settles, you talk too much, get out. So I'm wondering if there's a possibility of putting that in there. I don't know that it would go against anything, maybe it would just help, and I may be the only one.
No, I don't think it would go against anything. Of course, I'm not a school-based employee Joe, and maybe a principal might want to speak to what that process looks like on a day-to-day basis when they do get these referrals or they do have to have these conversations. But, I mean, based on what I know about our system and our counselors, I don't think that that would be any issue.
Yeah, and Mr. Marlin, if you want to come up to the podium. And I will say, many of these, like we said, we are already implementing. And I would say, from, I look at the principals here, I would dare say that most of them are highly involving the school counselor in these meetings, especially when they get to the point where they're, it's an ongoing behavioral issue. But, Mr. Marlin, if you want to speak more.
Before you start, let me ask this question. This is a permanent removal from a classroom, right? It's not just a...
Not necessarily.
Yeah, the law allows the removal to be for a certain period of time. So it could be, you know, you need to go to a different classroom for a day or two just to cool off and reset. It could be for a week. It could be for a month. It could be for the rest of the school year. And that's the principal's discretion, I guess, based on the circumstances. So it does not necessarily mean a permanent removal until the next grade level.
In-school suspension and out-of-school suspension would also count as a removal as a disciplinary option.
Mr. Marlin?
So the law mentions that the principal will have this conversation with students, with the student, and that's just to hear the student's side of the story, not necessarily at that point to say, hey, Johnny, you're out, as you mentioned. But we would always involve counselors, especially if we think there's, you know, the child is negatively affected or has some, you know, emotional reaction to the movement. But as far as putting it in as a part of the law, the law did not, the legislator did not do that when they laid that out. So that was just one of, but we, as a school system, would always want to look at that, see if the child needs that sort of services.
So you don't feel that it's necessary to codify that in this policy?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, anytime we change the law that the law has laid out, I'm always a little cautious about that, but I'll leave that to the lawyer to talk.
I think if we were to put it in the policy, we'd still be in compliance with the law. The law requires that a conversation be had, at least by the principal and the student. But again, if we put it in there, then it applies to every situation, regardless of whether a counselor is needed in that situation or not. So that's just something to consider as well. So if we make it mandatory, it's mandatory.
Yes, right, right, right. I get it. I get it completely, yeah. Absolutely. I'm just, and I'm heartened to hear that we do have counselors at every juncture. There's no doubt in my mind that that was going on. It just kind of came to my thinking when we get to the point that this is actually, because I'm like chairman, I thought, well, this means the kid is out, you know, forever. You can never come back in my classroom, et cetera, et cetera. And to me, that would be a psychological event.
Yeah.
Even having gone through all of the prerequisites and et cetera, et cetera, when you tell me I can never come back in this classroom, the finality of that has got to be, to me, overwhelming.
Yeah, and to maybe help ease your concerns, I'll talk about the options that the law provides in response to these requests. So if a principal gets a request, the options are to assign the student to an appropriate classroom for a specified time or for the remainder of the student's assignment for the year. In-school suspension, the law also offers alternative school, but of course, that doesn't apply to our district. Suspending the student, requiring a parent conference before the student's return to the classroom from which they were removed, or they can deny the request and offer additional supports to the teacher to help manage the behaviors.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson and Ms. Barton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. There seems to be quite a bit of discussion about this, and it touches and concerns several laws, both on the state level and the federal level. At this time, I would move that we tabled this vote to another time.
We can't, can we?
Well, if we table, it becomes, the law becomes effective January 1.
Yeah, we got to do it.
Doesn't matter what we do.
That's exactly correct, but I don't want the state of Tennessee telling the Murfreesboro City School what it has to do and us adopt it, codify it, make it our own. We'll let the, from my opinion, we'll let the law go into effect when the law goes into effect. We do not have to adopt this. We're already doing what we need to do. We're doing far better than what's being suggested or recommended. So if we're not going to table it, Mr. Chairman, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for this.
Ms. Barton?
I'd just like to say that, still knowing well, most of the, several of the principals, and knowing what we did in the past, the counselor and the whole team is involved in this process from day one. So as soon as a teacher starts to have issues that she is not able to handle within the boundaries of her own classroom, and she seeks the help of the counselor or the social worker or whoever, depending on what she thinks that child's issues are, I mean, it's all wrapped up together the entire time. And really and truly, the law is not very different from what we already do anyway. They can already request that a child be given in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. So I don't understand what, I don't think it would be a big deal to go ahead and do this, just because it's something we're pretty much already doing. The length of time could be different, because typically, in-school and out-of-school suspension are not given for long periods of time. And I have done it in the past as a principal, where a child actually went to another classroom for weeks or maybe even a month. So, and it really turned out to be a good experience for both classrooms. That can happen. So it's not, it's not as punitive as it sounds. That child's not happy either, right? So we're trying to find a way to help that child be more satisfied at school as well, so.
I get that.
My two cents were.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Richardson to table this discussion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Got a question.
Well, let me get, see if I get a second first. Do we have a second? All right, so then the motion dies for lack of a second. Now, Mr. Ballard?
Thank you. In the case of this being the first reading, wouldn't we be virtually tabling it if we just wait till the second reading to approve it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I'm sorry. I'm saying, this is a first reading, and procedurally, we're going to do, we're going to approve it on a second reading.
Correct. It'll come back up again in January.
We're tabling it because we're going to wait till the second reading to approve it. We have time to review it, consider what's going on, before we come back at the first of the year and approve it.
Yes, if you approve it on first reading tonight, if you go home and you think it over, if you have any amendments, you can address that with me or Dr. Duke, and we can look into it and make any proposed amendments for second reading approval in January.
So does that take a motion to...
No, I think that's already, that's what we're doing.
It would take a motion to approve it on first reading.
You have a motion to approve it on first reading?
Right.
Okay.
And that's where my concern was, is that this is a first reading. We've got another couple to do before it goes in anyway, so with that in mind, I move for the adoption of this on first reading.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I guess I'm asking for you to clarify. When you say, approve this on the first reading, you mean as if there's not going to be another reading? That's what I understand when you say approve it on the first reading.
Oh, no, because it's in the agenda as on first reading, so I'm just, I'll take the first reading part out. I move the approval of this board policy.
Okay.
As we've read it first.
I didn't know what I was voting on.
Absolutely.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I will second it.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Is there any other discussion? Is this state law?
Yes.
Well, it doesn't matter whether we approve it or not, it's still going to be there, right?
Correct.
But we do get to craft it some, don't we? I know we normally, I don't want to say cut and paste, you know I'm going to push the envelope a little bit, Elizabeth. This is my Christmas gift to you.
It depends on the crafting you want to do.
Right, that's why, remember when I asked a question about the counselor and this and that? That's what I mean, because the state law does come down, but they leave it to the local school board to actually put the policy together.
Correct.
That's my understanding. So we know that it's state law, but the state law didn't come down and write our policy for us necessarily. We still have to write the policy.
Correct.
And that's what we're doing now.
In compliance with the law.
Right, in compliance with the law.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept the policy as written, which will be first reading, knowing that you're going to have other readings coming later on, and if you have some changes you'd like to make, if this is approved as written, then you need to get in touch with either Elizabeth or Trey, and those changes can be brought forth on the second reading, correct?
Correct.
All right. So all in favor of approving as written, as first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item?
Yes, sir. Our next item is approval of board policy 6.313, our Code of Behavior and Discipline. This policy is an existing board policy on behavior, and the amendment adds the term "removal" as a level-two misbehavior consequence in accordance with the new law, and we are recommending approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item? I'm trying to get my thing, my agenda back up.
Approval of budget amendments and transfers.
That's a paper copy.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Our next item is the approval of our budget amendments and transfers with Ms. Williams.
You can have it. Thanks.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
You're right, there is a lot of pretty red. So tonight, before you, we have one budget transfer, a budget amendment, and it is to move money within the previously approved major categories from one line item to another. The first request is to increase the director's professional development line item by $3,000, and this would make it possible for the director to attend, and I'm going to read this straight to make sure I have this, the, well, the National School Superintendent's Conference, and this year it will be held in Nashville. And that will allow our director to attend that conference and a couple of spring meetings and conferences later in the year. And the second part of this amendment is to increase our transportation repair line item, and we've had some pretty expensive, costly bus repairs in the last couple of months especially, and so this will allow us to pay for those items. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we have any question, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Do you believe these transfers to be reasonable and necessary?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Ms. Moore?
Just have a comment. I think it's a good, a good use of professional development if you can go to the national conference when it's in Nashville. if you can go to the national conference when it's in Nashville, that's a, a good opportunity for you to do that, and if we can do it at the lower cost, this one year, when it's in Nashville, then it's a good time to do it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budget line item transfer.
Thank you, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you, all reports and information, personnel?
Yes, sir, uh, the first, uh, you have your personnel report in front of you, and Mr. Ringstaff is available for any questions you may have regarding that.
Anyone have, Mr. Ballard?
Just as an overview, are we doing okay with, I mean, I see these, what's happening here, as far as the, what you're reporting, but I don't know whether that's good news, bad news, we're on the struggle bus, or we're doing okay?
Yes, sir, we are doing good. We're doing good.
So, the hiring plan, the hiring is where we need it?
Knock on wood, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear, because I still hear every time you pick up the paper or turn on news about where this education and hiring is going, it seems like it's just, can't find enough people at any time.
We refuse to read the paper.[926.23][926.23](laughter)
I stand corrected.[930.12][930.12](laughter) Yeah, well, good, I, I know that between bus drivers and cafeteria workers and teachers and subs, it's a, it's a full tilt trying to get everything handling right now, and get them, get people back, is it, is it the wage that you think is?
All those positions that you named, they are challenges, and that we face, and, but we're, we're meeting those challenges head-on, and, uh, I think we're getting the better of it, and, yes, at budget time, we will, some surveys, wage surveys, and proposing some adjustments.
I would think, you know, I hear the analogies often lately about Chick-fil-A paying $19 an hour, just so people to run into Chick-fil-A, but, you know, the thing that we have is benefits program, you know, the incentives to, to build a future are here, so it's hard for me to believe that people run to fast food when they could be working on a career.
Well, we have the best benefits, we get to work with children every day.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.[1002.73][1002.73](applause)
Thank you, sir, all right, enrollment report?
Good evening again, Board, good evening, I draw your attention to the, uh, reports that you have in front of you there, the first is the enrollment report, and this is for period three, and real quickly, let me explain that, that takes us through the beginning of the year through, uh, till November the 11th, the reason that is, is because we're on 20-day basis, we just ended today, will be the end of period four, but we always give the schools two or three days to wait for parent notes to come in, for those sort of things, for absences, so, we'll actually compile that report later on this week, or as, as we, as we finish up, so, this is for the third period, uh, as, as you'll notice, our enrollment at that time was 9,378, that's 378 above where we ended at the end of last year, if you look back to the last period, the last 20-day period, that's 29 more students than, than we had at the end of the last period, um, if you'll look at your next sheet, which is the PTR, the pupil-teacher ratio for period three, as we look at K through three in the center of the page, in the, in the green at the top, we can see that all of our classrooms, uh, are below the, the state requirement, and the same is true if you look to the right, far right-hand side, for the total, for the four through six grades, all those are within those same requirements, at the bottom of the page, our, uh, our regular education PTR for grades K through three is 18.71, that's across the district, and then across the district for grades four through six is 20.81, with the total being 19.36 students per classroom. And, while we're waiting for any questions regarding that, we'll move on to truancy then, truancy at the end of the, uh, third period, we have 41 students across the district who, who meet that requirement of, of 10 days or more of unexcused absences, um, that's relatively, that's a very low number, uh, and, and we're proud of where we are, our attendance clerks are working really hard on that with parents, to make sure that they're getting, uh, their excuse notes in, and working with them to help, uh, overcome any barriers that's, that the parents are having at this time, and students with attendance, and then the last report is the chronic absenteeism, students missing 10% or more, so at the end of 60-day period, that would be six days, so any students that have missed six days would be counted, that includes excused and unexcused absences, if you'll notice at the bottom of the page, for period three, we have 1,703 students who have, have missed six days or more, and, but compared to the second period, where we had over 2,000, that's a, that's a decrease of about 300 students, so as, as I've mentioned to you before, that number decreases as we go through the year, because fewer and fewer students are missing those higher numbers of days, and thank goodness, that's, that's the, that's the trend, and it's looking good for this year.
Anyone have a question? Thank you, Mr. Marlin?
Thank you.
We ready for revenue and expenditure?
Yes, yes, sir, revenue and expenditure report with Ms. Williams.
Good evening, so before you, tonight, you have three pages, one is a one-page summary of total revenues received through the end of November, just, just under, let's say $29 million, right at $29 million, with total expenditures of $31.7 million, and we are still very much on target for receiving our revenues, our state and local sales tax continues to come in considerably higher than it did this time last year, so, November to November, we're looking at a 12.5% increase just on the local portion of what we receive in Murfreesboro City Schools, so right now, as far as our revenue, the timing of our revenue, our sales tax, and our BEP money are the biggest pots of, of revenue that come in, now, Rutherford County, property taxes will be coming in, uh, in the month of December, January, and, and February, so we'll start seeing some pretty large county-shared property taxes come in, in the next couple of months, on the expenditure side, what I like to look at are those percentages, and are we in line with our budget, and where do we find some problems, or not necessarily problems, but areas that we need to watch, so the amendment earliest, earlier tonight really kept us on track with our bus repairs and some of our professional development, we continue to monitor labor and benefits on an ongoing basis, especially with the budget process that will start again, um, next month, very soon, so we are in line and consistent with the, the revenues that we're collecting, and our expenditures that are going out, and this is, the information that you have in front of you is for the general purpose operating fund, which is the largest, largest of the, of the major funds, so, and I'm sure you answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on our expenditure and revenue report? Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
All right, directors update, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir, just a few updates tonight, um, one, I wanted to share a PowerPoint slide with you, as we look to implement this new behavior law in January, I thought it would be a good time for us to kind of review some of the supports we do have in place for our students, and so, I believe John's gonna pull this up, um, and specifically, as we think about what we're doing in our building to address behavior, so just briefly, as you remember from the budget process, this year, we did add two additional school counselors this year, which put us at a 1 to 500 ratio, and as we, again, that's a ratio we want to hold to make sure that we have the counselors in our building to support that, this year, we also did add one additional social worker, which gives us a total of six, and these social workers are frequently working with our social and emotional issues, uh, mental health issues, and behavioral issues, so really pleased with that addition that the board made last year to add that additional staff, uh, we have also hired additional STARS and Centerstone counselors this year, and again, these are the outside agencies that come in and work with our students, and I'm gonna do a little bit of a, a math problem with you, if you can follow me for just a second, so, first, this is not part of the math problem, but STARS this year is now serving 10 schools, which is up from eight last year, so we are seeing an increase with that additional mental health support, so if we think about this, and I'll show you how to get to the number, we have five days in a week, and we have 13 schools, meaning if we had a mental health therapist in every school, every day of the week, we would need 65 coverage days in that week, if that makes sense, so, every school, 13 schools, and a mental health counselor there every day, that gets us to 65 spots in that week, last year, we were at 22 days of coverage during that week, this year, with the additional, uh, STARS counselors, we're up to 40, um, and one thing you'll hear me talking about, and I'll go ahead and plant that seed, as we look at our five-year plan, and as we look at our budget, that the goal is obviously to get to 65, and us wanting to be in a place, we have in Murfreesboro City consistently been someone who's really focused on that whole child support, and we want to continue that, we've been a leader there, and we want to continue to be a leader there, we have three of our ACIS counselors, which is again, our adverse childhood effects counselors, those are ours, Mr. Marlin and Ms. Frank have really reworked those job expectations this year, to be able to increase the number of students they see on a regular basis, so we're really pleased with that work, and that really comes through ongoing meetings that Mr. Marlin has with our principals, um, to kind of see how they're being used, he monitors the caseloads to make sure that those are being used and utilized appropriately, of course, we have three behavioral interventionists who work to support tier-three behavioral needs, and we do continue to contract with Ms. Frank, who of course, is a previous employer of ours, to supervise and oversee our counselors and mental health services, and so I always want to make sure when we talk about things like behavior, that again, we really want to spotlight the level of support we have in this district, to make sure that our kids and our students' needs are being met, um, from the emotional or the behavioral needs that they may have, that may indicate some of these problems that we talked about earlier, so, we're pleased with this, we do have more room to grow, but I would say, we're very pleased, uh, with Mr. Marlin and Ms. Frank in what they're offering this year, so I wanted to share that with you, um, briefly this morning, this afternoon. Any questions on that, before I move to, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have with that? All right, our next update, I just want to remind the Board that the state continues to explore the new school funding model, um, and our staff continues to engage in the process to help make sure we can advocate for the needs of our community, I do anticipate the State Department will look to the General Assembly to pass the new funding law in the next assembly, which starts in January, if they do it, the word we're receiving right now is it would not actually go into effect until July of 2023, so this new funding formula could have pretty significant impact on us in Murfreesboro, um, and to be completely transparent, one of the questions I'm asking as a director, as many directors are, is, is this going to be good for our district, and at this point, we don't really have that information yet, um, I will say, Mr. Campbell and I are attending another meeting this Friday to continue to learn more, and we'll keep the board updated as we look at that new funding model. Finally, maybe, uh, our, at our November meeting, uh, the board did pass the continuation of the mask mandate, and set an expiration date of Friday, December 17th, which is this Friday, uh, as we discussed in our last meeting, the extension of the mask mandate provided families a full eight weeks to have their child go through the five-week vaccination process, if they elected to do that, with no new extension in place, that me, this would mean, we are set to return to school as mask optional in January, as a reminder to our families, we are posting those numbers every week on our district website, so that they can make the most informed decision for their child, um, also, we are continuing, if we see, we will be continuing the practice of if we see a particular hotspot in a school, then we will do direct messaging to that school, so families are aware, and so that families can make the best decision for their child, but I did want to remind the board of that deadline that will go into effect, or the expiration date that will go into effect this Friday. And finally, uh, speaking of Friday, it's the last day of the semester, so, uh, Friday will be the last day of our semester, and we're all looking for, I know our students are, and our teachers are, to a wonderful three, a two-week vacation, so, and Mr. Chairman, that are all my, all of my updates for tonight.
All right, sir, thank you very much, all right, any other comments, or anything from any board member? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor, say aye, and good night.
Aye, and good night.